What am I gonna do?
We're gonna help Moe.
Oh, I'm trying. By the way, for the new people, did you understand the email on the Whipper benefit?
So we're live.
We're live.
No, we haven't.
I think you need to mute. Jim.
Calling the March 28th meeting to order.
I know.
I know. Please rise and salute the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Looking for nominations for chair for the ensuing year.
I nominate Dennis Moran to be chairman of the planning board.
Is there a second?
This is Barbara. I second.
Mr. Zott beat you with his hand.
I'm sorry. Sorry, got in trouble.
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Eddy?
Aye.
Ms. Eddy?
Aye.
Mr. Mashon?
Aye.
Mr. Burke?
Aye.
And Mr. Zott?
Aye.
That's unanimous. Mr. Chair, the chair.
Thank you.
He's yours.
Thank you. Can I have a motion for a vice chair?
I nominate Barbara White to be vice chair.
Thank you, Bob.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Zott. Paul Jim?
Aye.
One thing, since you're now chair, would you please put Mr. Zott in place of Mr. Guy?
Sure. Do I have to make a motion or can I just make that?
Thank you. Mr. Moran?
Declare it.
Okay, declare. Aye.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Eddy?
Aye.
Mr. Zott?
Aye.
Ms. Eddy?
Aye.
Mr. Mashon?
Aye.
Ms. Burke?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Thank you, Jim. So first on the agenda, we have a resignation of the board. Mr. Guide, due to his elected position as selectman, has resigned. So we will thank Mr. Guide for his service for the past year. Definitely the wrong agenda that I'm looking at. So next we have to reorganize the board, basically, because there's new members here. Correct? And select alternates?
Speak up.
Okay. Is that better? We have to select alternates for the board. So we had a few members of the community come forward to be appointed as alternates, and then, due to Mr. Guide's resignation, we had a member of the community come forward to accept that position. So Mr. James Ryan, who's in the audience today, came forward and was due to the open position, contacted the planning board, wishing to seek and fill that opening until March of 2024. So do I have to motion all these?
They all need motions.
Okay, so can I have a motion to accept Mr. Ryan's offer to fill Mr. Guide's seat?
So moved.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second, this is Barbara.
I think that was Ms. Eddy?
No, it was Barbara.
Okay. By the way, you're moving to a point.
Okay, so moving to a point, Mr. Ryan.
Yep.
So roll call, please.
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Eddy?
Aye.
Mr. Zott?
Aye.
Ms. Eddy?
Aye.
Mr. Mashon?
Aye.
Mr. Burke, sorry, Ms. Burke?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
And in similar fashion, we had five members of the community come forward and request to be alternates. So in chronological order, based on when their term would end, could I have a motion to appoint Mr. Keith Gibbons until March of 2024?
So moved.
Second, this is Barbara.
You can do these all as one motion.
Even if their terms are different?
Yeah, just be clear about how long their terms will last.
Okay. So I'll do that next.
So the, okay.
So Barbara seconded Mr. Gibbons. Roll, please.
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Eddy?
Aye.
Mr. Zott?
Aye.
Ms. Eddy?
Aye.
Mr. Mashon?
Aye.
Ms. Burke?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Thank you for that clarification, Jim. And then the remaining, and I apologize for this, Costas Papakristos, is that correct?
Yes.
For March of 2025, Mr. Michael Murphy, to March of 2025, Mr. Jordan Piper, until March of 2026, Mr. Paul Zott, until March 2026. So can I have a motion to make the four following members alternates, or appoint them as alternates?
So moved.
Thank you, Bob.
Second, this is Barbara.
Thank you, Barbara.
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Eddy?
Aye.
Mr. Zott?
Aye.
Ms. Eddy?
Aye.
Thank you. And thank you to the members of the public for coming.
Mr. Mashon?
Aye.
And Ms. Burke?
Aye.
Not used to this many members in front of us.
That's okay.
Okay, so I was just gonna thank everybody for coming forward. We haven't had this much interest in the planning board in a long time.
The board needs to request the resignation.
From Mr. Guide?
No, from Mr...
Oh, and then Mr. Zelinski, so there was a member that has been an alternate. Mr. Zelinski, he has not been attending recently, so we're requesting a formal resignation. And thankfully, we have enough people appointed now to serve as an alternate. So, Jim, can you follow up with him to request his resignation, please? Thank you.
We would also like to thank him for his years of service that he has given to the board when he was able to.
That actually needs to be a motion.
Oh, could I have a motion?
Yes.
Thank you, Bob. I would second that.
Second, this is Barbara.
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Eddy?
Aye.
Mr. Zott?
Aye.
Ms. Eddy?
Aye.
Mr. Mashon?
Aye.
Ms. Burke?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Thank you. Okay, now that we're aboard again, we can get down to business. We have a couple things.
One more piece of housekeeping. You need to do a motion to reaffirm the policies in the prestigious manual, including the fee schedule.
And I have a motion to accept the recently edited policies and procedures. Most of you don't know this, but Jim has gone through here and edited this, mostly for grammatical changes and updates to recent House bills.
So moved.
Second, this is Barbara.
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Eddy?
Aye.
Mr. Zott?
Aye.
Ms. Eddy?
Aye.
Mr. Mashon?
Aye.
Ms. Burke?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Now I'm ready to go? Thank you. Okay, so first on the agenda, we have Ryan McGuire and Karen Laws
Yes.
of Newton, New Hampshire, requesting a public hearing for a non-retail home-based business landscaping at 75 Whittier Street, Newton, New Hampshire. The property is referenced as Tax Map 5, Block 4, Lot 5. Ms. Rowden, would you like to give a synopsis of this application, please?
Sure. So this application is for a home-based business, landscaping-type business on Whittier Street. I do think the application is complete. I do have a question that I think when the applicant gets to give us an overview of what his proposal is, that I would like him to address if he can. The types of vehicles that you have on the map, or the sketch that you provided called vehicle parking, what types of vehicles, their approximate size, just because that has a difference in some of the requirements of the ordinance. So if he can speak to that when he is able to, then I'll address the comment. But other than that, I do think the application is complete for accepting jurisdiction.
Perfect. Can I have a motion to accept jurisdiction?
So moved.
Thank you, Bob. A second?
Second, Barbara.
Thank you, Barbara.
Just because there are so many new people, you might ask Ms. Rowden to explain what accepting jurisdiction means.
Sure. Do you want to give a 30-second spiel?
Sure. The first step for the board to be able to make a determination on an application is whether or not it has sufficient information to make a determination, one way or the other. We consider that taking jurisdiction, or whether the application is complete. If the board feels it is a complete application, then it can take it under advisement and then hear from the applicant, open it up for the public hearing, and then potentially approve, deny, or conditionally approve the application.
And once we have jurisdiction, we have 65 days
Sixty-five days.
to make a decision?
Yes.
Thank you. Floor is yours.
All right. Members of the board, I'm Ryan McGuire, 75 Whittier Street. I'm here requesting permission for a land use permit for my landscape business. A couple of things that I do is, it's mostly landscape construction, so we deal mostly with patios, walkways, retaining walls, stuff of that nature. I do no lawn maintenance. I do no yard cleanups. So I do not dump anything on my property. There will be no grass clippings, leaves, nothing. Every once in a while, I will have to store maybe a pallet of stone here and there, but we try to get rid of that stuff as quick as possible. The vehicles that I keep on the property that are used for my work is a dump truck. It's an F-350. It's 14,000 pounds. That's my biggest truck. My two trailers, one is registered as a 16,000-pound trailer, the other one is registered as a 10,000-pound trailer. And then I have my personal truck, which is a split-use, which is a 10,000-pound truck, and that's an F-250. I am not looking to build any additional structures on the property. I plan on using my existing garage, along with a steel container, which is already at the property, for any tool storage. Any fuel does stay in the container. It does not stay inside my home garage. So with that, I guess I can answer some questions.
Do you have any comment, Jim, on the gross vehicle weight?
Yeah, so one of the requirements for a home-based business is that you are limited, so no outdoor activity, but it's got a clause, including storage and parking of commercial vehicles or trailers exceeding 12,000-pound gross vehicle weight, except for the provisions of employee parking. Just based on your description, several of your vehicles, unfortunately, are larger than that. Typically, like mini bobcats can fit underneath that, but things like a dump truck and some of the other trailers you were mentioning are above that threshold.
Okay. Have we accepted a waiver for that?
You don't have, the planning board can't do a waiver.
Behind the power, you got that.
And because it's a conditional use permit, this is pretty technical, but the only way to get relief from that is to go to Superior Court, which is a long endeavor. The other avenue to be able to have this kind of business that I think that you're talking about, if you want to keep them on your property, is to actually get a variance from the zoning to allow a commercial use in what is a residential district.
Okay.
That's sort of the summary. I'd be happy to, if that's the route you want to go. I can walk you through it more procedurally, but the planning board can't permit having vehicles that are larger than those 12,000.
Okay.
If they're stored off-site, anything else that has been mentioned would tend to fit with the home-based business. But just that vehicle size kicks it, so it can't be in compliance with the home-based business.
And I do acknowledge- And there's nothing else that can be done about that, because I see a ton of businesses in town that have dump trucks, and none of those weigh 12,000 pounds.
So my understanding is there may be other places in town where that is the case.
Yeah.
That does not mean that that has gotten the approvals that it needs from the town. And I believe, and Mr. Don can speak to this, that the town is aware of many of these and is proceeding to take care of them to the extent they are able to. But I can't, on any specific property or anything, can't give you whether it's been approved or not. But I do now know there are cases in Newton where that has occurred.
Okay.
Yep. If you want assistance going through that process, let us know. Or run an F-250, and I totally understand. It's a one-ton truck. It's not big.
It's a one-ton truck. That's all it is. It's only 14,000 pounds, because the added gross vehicle weight comes from the dump bid.
Yep.
If you wanted to continue to proceed this evening and not have your vehicles be stored on the site, and you wanted to remove that from your approval, I think the board could continue with your application, but that would not be able to be approved as part of it.
Okay.
If that's something you want to continue. If you want to explore options, you can request a continuance of the board to see what your options are and come back to the next meeting.
Yeah, that's okay. We can continue if it's possible, because I don't really have any other options.
Well, if I may, so what Jim's talking about is that you would have the option for the smaller truck, along with your smaller trailer. If you have a bobcap or whatever that you use for a smaller maintenance vehicle, could be stored on that trailer and would be permissible to be parked on your property.
Okay.
However, your additional vehicles, if you rented a place to store them, you know, the other trailer with the bigger dump truck, and you only had those other vehicles, that would not be a problem, because we understand you would be allowed to register them, having the home-based business. And doing so, I believe you would be able to register all of them.
They just couldn't be physically stored there.
Yeah.
So you see what I'm saying?
Yep.
And then the pallets, like you talked about, you would end up having to leave them on your trailer, possibly where you're parking the other thing, and then it would not become an issue.
Okay.
And then you wouldn't have to go to the zoning board. And we would end up putting that in conditions of approval, if we were to approve it. If you came to us and said, "This is, all right, I've changed what I'm gonna do and what I can do, and here it is." And then that way, you would be within the guidelines to be able to allow us to be able to approve it and have your business out of your home.
Okay.
So that's one possible option. You can move forward right now, tonight.
Yeah.
You can continue to think about it for two weeks.
It should be able to go on to the next agenda. You guys don't have any schedules?
Next agenda. It's kind of up to you right now.
So that would be two weeks from now?
So you could do two weeks or four weeks, if you think you need more time.
Okay.
But if you're in agreement with that, the next meeting would be April 11th.
I will have to go to four weeks, then.
Okay, so then that would be April 25th, so the board would have to make a motion to move it to April 25th.
Mr. Zott has a question.
Yeah, I had a question. So how many vehicles in total were you planning on keeping on the property?
So I have my truck that I use for personal use, and then I have two trailers and one other truck.
Okay, I think our regulations state that you can only have two vehicles.
Two motor vehicles?
Yeah.
I believe that that's two vehicles for a business that doesn't include his personal vehicle.
Correct.
Thank you. So, I mean, if you want to, understanding that you may not be able to store all your vehicles there right now, if you want to, most of the time this comes up, is that you go downstairs to register your vehicles. You can't without a home-based business. You can't register them commercially, I should say, without a home-based business. They send you to the planning board. And so if you need to move forward with that, we could review your case, potentially approve your F-250, your trailers, and then you could do what you need to do with your other vehicle, or continue to the 28th.
Okay.
Kind of up to you, if you want to change that.
Yeah, I kind of have to do it, so no other option.
So you want to continue it till the?
25th.
Yep.
Oh, 25th, thank you.
Yep.
So can I have a motion to-
Motion to accept continuance till said date?
April 25th, 2023.
Second, this is Barbara.
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Eddy?
Aye.
Mr. Zott?
Aye.
Ms. Eddy?
Aye.
Mr. Mashon?
Aye.
Ms. Burke?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Thank you. So if you want to think about it, come back to us in a couple weeks and let us know.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Second on the agenda, we have Jesse Domenian and Megan Seer of Newton, New Hampshire, request a public hearing for a non-retail home-based business landscaping at 21 Whipperwell Drive, Newton, New Hampshire. The property is referenced as Tax Map 17, Block 2, Lot 14.
Hi, yes, Jesse Domenian.
Just one second, though. But thank you.
No problem.
Ms. Rowden?
So I do think that the application appears complete, kind of similar to the last one. I do have questions of where it says, "Commercial vehicle parked here," that's on your sketch. Just a little more detail about what that includes and doesn't include. But beyond that, I think the application's complete.
Okay. Can I have a motion, thank you, to accept jurisdiction? Mr. Zott? Second?
Second.
Ms. Burke?
I'll give it to you. Okay. Ms. Burke, okay.
All right, so you want to tell us about?
We have to do a roll.
Oh, roll.
Sorry.
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Eddy?
You're muted if he's talking.
I said aye.
Thank you.
Mr. Zott?
Aye.
Ms. Eddy?
Aye.
Mr. Mashon?
Aye.
Ms. Burke?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Thank you. You want to just give us a brief overview?
Yeah. Yeah, so landscaping business, but very different than the last landscaping business. I have a full-time job, and I just do lawn mowing on the side after work. So I have one pickup truck. It's a Chevy Silverado 1500, and it has a ramp that goes on the back of the pickup truck. It connects to the bed rails and the tow hitch. So I don't have a trailer. My lawnmower goes right into the bed of the truck, and I'll bring it to work with me, mow lawns after work, and then I come home, when I'm done mowing lawns at the end of the day, take the equipment off, and put it away for the night. So really, the only equipment I have for the business is the one commercial vehicle, which, like I said, it's a Chevy Silverado 1500, one lawnmower, one weed whacker, and one leaf blower. And that's it. I don't do the hardscaping, the cleanups, the mulch, any of that stuff. I don't bag grass clippings, so it's kind of streamlined.
You use that lawnmower on your own house?
I do. Kind of a perk of having the lawnmower.
I've actually seen the attachment that goes on the back of this truck. It is wicked cool.
Whoa, whoa, in that case.
Just one question. No grass clippings, nothing would ever be coming back on to your property, other than grass from your own lawn?
That's correct. I actually don't even catch the clippings at my own house. I just mulch them.
It's the best way to do it.
Mm-hmm. It's the greenest way.
Exactly.
But yeah, that's actually, you know, part of the reason why I decided to do the business the way I did is because, you know, you see all the landscapers out there, they have, you know, one-ton dump trucks with big enclosed trailers, and I always thought there was a more efficient way to do it. So it's one pickup truck, like I said, no trailer. It's very efficient.
Cool.
Happy to answer any questions.
We should also tell him that he's permitted to put a sign up, too, and we want to give him the dimensions on the sign that he's permitted to put up, if approved.
Two square feet.
Two square feet, got it. I don't think I would put a sign up, but I appreciate you mentioning that, and that's good to know that I have the right to do so. But, like I said, I don't think I would put a sign up.
Yeah, I saw on your letter from March 6th that you don't plan on using signage.
No, yeah. Not a lot of traffic on Whipperwell.
No, there's not.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, this is Barbara.
Yes, Barbara.
Did we take jurisdiction yet?
Yes.
Yes, we did.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any more questions from the board? Both of you, like?
So you have two employees. Where would they be parking on your site?
So two employees, myself and my lovely girlfriend. We park in the driveway.
There you go.
So close to the house.
Is there any questions from the audience or statements? How about on Zoom? I don't see any hands.
Yeah, this is Barbara. I just had one question.
Yep.
I know that his application said that his hours would be 8:00 to 4:00, Monday through Friday. Were you planning on anything on the weekend?
So I will, I should mention that 8:00 to 4:00 was kind of broad. It was something that I just put to put something down. So my hours would, when I'm actually mowing lawns, it's two days a week after work, usually Wednesday, Thursday. I get out of work at 3:30. I usually come home at like 7:00. So the hours would actually be a little later, but no, to answer your question on the weekends, I do not do landscaping on the weekends. Those are sacred to me. So no landscaping on the weekends.
Could you, by any chance, firm up the hours a little more? I mean, like, if you're gonna be bringing equipment, your stuff, well, I guess it's just your truck. If you're gonna be bringing it back home, like, at 8:00?
I know, I mean-
If you hit traffic?
Yeah, so I do, I do all my lawn mowing, for the most part, in Amesbury, because that's where I come from. So I, you know, get to Amesbury around 4:00. I'll mow for a couple hours, you know, 4:00 to 6:00, maybe 7:00, and, you know, it only takes a few minutes to get home. And it depends, you know. You got to make hay when the sun is shying, as they say. So in the summer, it's kind of daunted dusk. You know, some nights I've come home, you know, if I have to run an errand along the way, I come home, it's a little after dark, but.
Well, I think that's what Barbara's trying to allude to, that you might want to, weekend, instead of having to come back.
Yep.
Because if you wanted to extend those hours, to extend them now while you're here, which would be a lot easier.
Yeah, and I apologize. When I saw the hours, I guess my understanding was like, you know, when am I going to be answering phone calls and sending emails and stuff like that, but.
Do that.
Do you have a comment, Jim?
If you look on the sheet with the recommended facts and potential conditions, I listed it as being, "Hours of operation shall not detract from the quality of the neighborhood." That is something that you've used with this type of business in the past, so that you don't have somebody going, "Oh, it's 2 minutes after 8:00. You're, you know, late getting in." And where it is a casual operation versus a, yes, every Tuesday, rain, shine, hail, sleet, snow, that vehicle is going to be, by phrasing it this way, it's, you're not setting him into specific, "Oh gee, I got home early today, but I can't pull out of my driveway until 4:30." oh gee, I got home early today, but I can't pull out of my driveway until 4:30 because that's the time that it says. It just, it gives it a lot more leeway to somebody whose business is going off of the property and then at some point coming back. It's not like, this is a non-retail home-based business. So for them, he wants to leave his house at 3:00 a.m. and he's, you know, he's already loaded his vehicle and he's driving away. It's not being a distraction from the quality of the neighborhood. That is, I think, a lot more, it gives them a lot more leeway.
That works for me, as long as it works for you.
Yeah, that works for me.
Barbara, do you have any other questions?
No, that's it. That sounds good. Thank you.
Thanks. Any more questions from the board or the public? Mr. Ryan, you have to come up to the mic. You have to, like, say who you are, state your name.
Hi, I'm Jim Ryan. I just had a question. So that phraseology would replace, like, the hours that go in?
Specific hours, yes.
Okay, that's all I want to know. Thank you.
Thanks.
And I'll be using that same language in the future for non-retail home-based businesses because they're leaving the property. And you can see the other two proposed conditions of no outdoor storage of business-related materials and all business shall take place either inside the home or as offices or off-site.
So given no further discussion, do I do the finding of facts prior to it?
Yes, so just for the new board members. There was a change in state law in the past year that basically made it so that any land use board, planning boards, zoning boards need to make a finding of fact, like what basis are you using to make your decisions? Sometimes they're much more detailed than others. This one basically being it falls within the purview of the zoning ordinance and meets the spirit and intent of it, can be the finding of fact. But you have to state that and then you can move on to a motion to deny, approve, or conditionally approve. And those usually have other components to them, but the finding of fact is really key for keeping it very clear to applicants, abutters, any member of the board, what you're voting for, why you're voting for it, and then any conditions with it.
Thank you for that clarification. So based on our discussion, my opinion, and does the board have to agree with this? Or our opinion? Do I say our opinion or it's?
You can just make a statement that the planning board finds based on the following facts such, and then you can go in to make, have someone making a motion.
You can literally read what I had typed.
Yeah, I was just wondering if it was my opinion or the board's, if I'm speaking on behalf of the board.
The board is sitting as a quasi-judiciary board. Therefore, it is an opinion of the board, similar to the way it would be an opinion of the Supreme Court or lower court.
So that the business plans fall within the scope of the applicable zoning and site plan regulations for a non-retail home-based business. And our other fact or finding of the fact was the justice would be served by approving the application. So can I have a motion to approve the application in front of us with the following conditions? That they obtain a Newton Business occupancy permit? That's a precedent condition. And the ongoing conditions is that there's, as you previously mentioned, no outdoor storage of business related to material, all business hours, or all business shall take place inside the home or off-site. And the third is that the hours of operation shall not detract from the quality of the neighborhood.
So moved.
Who seconded? Mr. Zott, thank you. Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Eddy? Mr. Zott?
Aye.
Ms. Eddy?
Aye.
Mr. Marshon?
Aye.
Ms. Burke?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Thank you. So you will get some paperwork in a few days.
Okay. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Best of luck. Third on the agenda today is Clifton and Kimberly Ward of Newton, New Hampshire, request a public hearing for an auxiliary dwelling unit in a barn at 7 Highland Street, Newton, New Hampshire. The property is referenced as Tax Map 11, Block 10, Lot 9. Just so everybody's aware, Mr. Marshon is in a butter, so he's going to step out for a minute. And first off, I want to thank you for continuing this meeting because of, we postponed you a month. So Ms. Rowden, do you have any?
So my comments are limited. But I do think the application is complete. I do think that conditions of approval, which are fairly typical when you've done accessory dwellings, are that proper septic systems be vetted, all building and fire codes be met. But beyond that, that is the basic, it meets the requirements of your accessory dwelling unit requirements. It is the size, it is the enclosed structure, it's attached, it meets all of those requirements.
Thank you. Jim?
You have on your sheet the recommended facts defined and five potential conditions, two conditions precedent, three conditions ongoing.
Jen just basically summarized all those points. And we need to take jurisdiction of this as well.
Yes.
So can I have a motion to take jurisdiction, please?
So moved.
Mr. Zott?
Seconded.
Right, Ms. Burke?
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Eddy?
Aye.
Mr. Zott?
Aye.
Ms. Eddy?
Aye.
Ms. Burke?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Thank you.
Hi, Clifton Ward, my wife Kimberly, she's not here, 7 Highland Street. And we want to do an in-law apartment, accessory apartment. We have the existing garage barn attached to the house and tried to meet everything that we could. Parking in the back, stairway in the back, everything is behind the house, all that.
Perfect.
How many bedrooms?
One.
Okay.
700 square feet, I think, or 650, something like that.
Less than 800.
Yes.
Less than 800. Any comments from the public?
Well, here we go. Bob Marshand, resident, 8 Highland Street. I would just like to speak on behalf of the wards that they're great neighbors, wonderful family, their property is well-maintained, and I fully support what it is that they're trying to do with that auxiliary apartment. I feel that it will not detract from the neighborhood. And if it helps them, so be it. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's nice.
Makes it easy on us.
I have no further comments. Anybody else from the board? Barbara, the internet?
Yes, I do have a question.
Yes.
Is this proposed accessory dwelling unit going to be on the second floor of the barn then? Because it looks like these stairs go down.
Yes, yes, it is. Those stairs, I don't know what drawing. There's a staircase inside the barn going into the house down. And then we're putting a staircase on the back for an outside door. Yeah.
For a fire code and everything. Okay. All right, that was my question. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So based on that discussion, do you have a comment, Jen? No? Okay. The board has the following facts concerning the application. The plan falls within the scope of the applicable zoning and site plan regulations for an accessory dwelling unit. And that justice would be served by approving the application. So can I have a motion to approve the accessory dwelling unit with the following conditions? Obtain all local and state permits, including occupancy permit. Sorry. And a copy of the approved septic plan be on file. Conditions ongoing would be, as we mentioned previously, that the apartment is 800 square feet or less, that all life safety codes are met, and that the utilities must be shared by the main house in the accessory apartment, one electrical connection.
Can we, can we just state that it needs to meet our Section 8 accessory apartments? Because then it'll cover all the things you said plus additional things.
You can certainly state that it needs to meet all of the accessory apartment conditions of Section 8 if you wanted to. It is good for the, at least the size specifically, to have that noted as well just because it puts people on notice. And the life safety code and septic, again, are just good reiterations of that requirement.
How about this? The ongoing condition, limit the accessory dwelling apartment. The limit of the accessory dwelling, accessory apartment is 800 square feet or less and conditions of Section 8?
Section 8 accessory apartments.
Accessory apartments, thank you. I think the problem we've had in the past is that we've tried to go that route and then people are like, oh, I didn't read it. Not saying that you wouldn't do that, but.
Okay. So you want me to put Section 8 into the?
Sure, please.
So it's the 11 items that are required for accessory dwellings to be approved in the town of Newton. That's what Section 8 states.
Correct.
Okay, just for clarity.
I mean, it would protect the board.
Yeah, I'm not trying to be a man.
No, I get it.
I just didn't want to pick and choose and make it look like that's all we had to do.
Yes.
Exactly.
No problem.
Do you want to make the motion?
I'd love to make a motion to accept.
I second.
Ms. Burke seconded it.
Anything further? Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Eddy?
Aye.
Mr. Zott?
Aye.
Ms. Eddy?
Aye.
Ms. Burke?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
May I take my seat, Mr. Chairman?
Sure, thank you, Bob. Fourth on the agenda is the continuation of 125 Development Corp. of Plastow, New Hampshire's request for a public hearing for a forebidding condominium site plan off South Main Street in Newton, New Hampshire. This property is referenced as Tax Map 14, Block 1, Lot 27-3. The applicant provided the board a summary on this application.
Thank you.
It's been in front of us for a year.
A little over a year.
Forever. Ms. Rowden, do you have any thoughts? You don't want, I'm going to just cut you off. The applicant has provided some additional material since they've been in front of us. One of those includes an estimate of construction costs for a bond. Our town engineer, KV Partners, Mike Vicnelli, reviewed it. Generally agrees with the cost or the estimate that was provided without going into too much detail. Okay, now I'll give it over to you, Jen.
Okay. I do think that the applicant's summary is accurate. Forgive me, Barry, if I get this wrong, but Plastow did conditionally approve this application at their meeting a few weeks ago. And that the condition is based on Newton also having approval. There are some ongoing, if we get to an approval this evening, conditions. But I think it would be helpful, because we have so many new board members, if Barry can go through an overview of the application, the site, and the items that have been noted. They are all in his letter, but just to catch everybody up to speed. That would be my recommendation.
Absolutely. Good evening. My name is Barry Guyer. I'm with Jones and Beach Engineers here for the applicant. And we have been here for about 18 months, my records indicate. But the project we have before you is what we call Phase 2 of the Southern New Hampshire Industrial Park. It contains, this lot contains 144, 143.76 acres in a light industrial-commercial zone. The project is located on the west side of Route 108. It's just south of the existing Puzzle Lane. And what I kind of say to the west are behind what Howard Lane, which is a cul-de-sac. We do have a large, and you can see the existing additions here on the top. We do have a large wetland complex in the center of the property with smaller wetland pockets throughout. It does have frontage on Route 108. The intent of the project is to construct a site plan containing four industrial-commercial buildings, which you could see on Sheet C2 and C3. So the entire project extends quite a ways. We're just working on the area kind of adjacent to Howard Lane currently. So it is four industrial-commercial buildings with associated parking and utilities. The buildings total 192,750 square feet. The project includes construction of two private roadways. Industrial Drive is a 2,158 linear private roadway which extends from Route 108 to the cul-de-sac. So this is what we're calling Industrial Way. And then Puzzle Lane, which is a, which will eventually connect to the existing Puzzle Lane, is a 1,016 linear foot roadway that'll eventually loop to Puzzle Lane. Stormwater from the project is collected via roadside ditches and is directed to one of five infiltration basins or one gravel wetland for treatment, infiltration, and detention. The applicant has provided the board with all the required reports, including drainage reports, traffic analysis, hydro-geological report. We've submitted the required state permits, which are the DES Alteration of Terrain Permit, DES Wetland and Dredge Fill Permit. We do have four wetland impacts or wetland fills totaling 3,637 square feet. All of our wetland impacts are associated with the installation of the roadways. And we do have a DOT driveway permit. The driveway permit is currently under review. The proposed mitigation is under review on Route 108. We have been informed by DOT that the driveway permit will be approved at the location that we are connecting to 108. It's just a matter currently of reviewing the actual mitigation required. The applicant has provided all the information requested by the board. We have obtained all the required variances and approval from Plastow Planning Board. We have received review letters from the town engineer and the town planner. And we believe any outstanding items can be conditioned of approval. Like I said, we have been in front of the board for a year and a half. We would like to move forward with the conditional approval, the conditions of which may be adding a note as suggested by Ms. Rowden, updating the notes per the town of Plastow approval, obtaining the AOT permit and adding the number to the cover sheet, obtaining the wetland and dredge fill permit and adding the number to the cover sheet, obtaining the DOT permit and adding a cover to the, the number to the cover sheet. And we would suggest that the septic system permits for the individual septic systems be a condition of approval prior to the start of the building construction. And with that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
I have one very specific one. Have you gotten confirmation from the gas line utility about their approval of the road going across?
Yeah, we are working with them. They know what's going on. They're reviewing to see if we, they have sufficient cover over the pipes, which we believe that is the case. They've reviewed this in the past, but it's a new generation of people since that's occurred. But we believe that we meet all the requirements. We are working with them. It's just a matter of dotting the i's, crossing the t's.
So a letter of confirmation to that effect would be one additional condition I would recommend.
Um, I was curious, why, why are there no handicap parking spots associated with Building 3?
If there aren't, that was just an oversight.
I don't, I don't see them.
And, uh...
I haven't got through the whole plan, but any place where it shows?
Building 3? Yeah, they're right in front of the building.
Well, I, I now see them on C3B. I didn't see them on the C2 documents.
C2C shows them.
Does it?
Yeah.
And then I apologize.
It's not unheard of that we might have missed something, but in that case, we did.
They are there. I'll confirm that.
Oh, okay, I didn't recognize them. Thank you.
So one other thing with the bonding that I did note that I don't believe Mike Vicnelli, the town engineer, commented on was some landscaping performance guarantees. There was no estimate related to that. That might be something the board may want to consider. There's not extensive landscaping on this site, but to ensure that it is there, they get, and it survives, a typical, a bond amount to that effect for it surviving for two years.
And to that point, um, this is the email that you and I were going back and forth on earlier, I think yesterday. The line item on the bonds for 17 is excluding the $12,000. That's, so it's not totaling out. In the grand scheme of things, I don't think it's changing. I mean, if we were to move forward, and this is just clarification for everybody, at least in, in my opinion, that, um, you know, that, I'm just going to round this, the $2.1 million construction fee, like, it's, I think there's enough money in there to protect the community if this bond had to get pulled, for whatever reason, to cover that $12,000 or $15,000 with a, um, and demultiplier on it. So, um, but I think we should add conditions specifically for plantings or, um...
I would pull the plantings separate from the construction bond. That, that's to stabilize the site. The, the landscaping is to make it a nicer aesthetic site. The plantings of grass are for stabilization.
Okay. Jim?
I've added actually two things to the, to page. Permit numbers to be added to the cover sheet and a landscaping performance guarantee that has a end date that is to grow seasons past the time of its issuance.
Okay.
Will they be a separate interest to 108, this property?
Yes, I think if I understand your question correctly. So the proposed access is between the little retail center...
Mm-hmm.
...and the landscape area where the landscape company parks their trucks currently. There's actually a, um, a right-of-way specifically for this property located there. It doesn't look at, like it when you see it, but, um, there is, and that's where it'll go. There's actually a DOT driveway permit that was pulled in the past for that location. We're just upgrading it.
And this may answer your question a little bit more. Probably nine months, maybe closer to a year ago, when this was originally presented to the board, there was access through Howard Lane. There's an existing right-of-way at the end of Howard Lane that connects Howard Lane to this parcel. Based on discussions and feedback from the community, that was like a hard no to connect Howard Lane. So there was emergency access there. We received feedback from some of the abutters, as well as feedback from the fire department, as well as the road agent, that in their opinion, they did not need that access. So it was removed to try to preserve the neighborhood. So, um...
So currently, there's only one...
Right.
...access proposed to the, eventually, we will connect over to the existing Puzzle Lane.
And that's why you see the road going up over and, where they're talking about over that gas pipeline, they put that little L section in for trucks to be able to turn around and come back down until they connect that road from that point all the way up around back to Puzzle Lane.
Yeah, C2 kind of shows our phase. Where currently, we're in here in this Phase 2. Eventually, we're going to loop back around through these other, the two other lots that the same entity owns, and then connect to the existing Puzzle Lane.
I seem to recall at one time, there was a concern by the fire department about being able to turn around trucks. I guess you've addressed that.
They did review the turnaround and said it was sufficient for them.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
There was, Jim, you and I...
No, go ahead.
I was going to say there, at one time, I believe it dead-ended at the gas line, or just over the gas line.
I think we've been in front of the gas line, over the gas line, behind the gas line, and this is the final. We've been here for 18 months, and it's been very active.
Yeah. Sorry.
So one just thing for all of the new board members. If this gets a conditional approval or an approval, they would still have to come back to do any future phases, any changes, they would have to come back to the planning board for an approval from that, so just...
So if and when the other road gets built, if they add another building, if they change the use of the building from manufacturing widgets to a gymnasium? And they have provided traffic studies that we've reviewed, the hydrogeological study. You're still waiting on your alteration of terrain permit, as well as your wetland dredge fill permit?
And the DOT permit.
DOT permit.
Slows all need to be noted as conditions on, though.
Yes, and that is, it's in here somewhere, Condition 2. And...
So...
Forward-thinking, if there is revisions to, so say this goes to the Alteration Terrain Bureau, and they change their drainage, they come back to us?
Correct. So if for some reason, the driveway permit has issues, and they have to make it significantly wider, or alteration terrain says you have to change the stormwater drainage of any, any significance, they have to come back. If it's move it afoot, sometimes that, that can be okay, but anything of any significance, they have to come back.
Just reminding the board, E911 still has concerns with the names of both Puzzle Lane, because Puzzle Lane is a public road that has a terminus, and Industrial Way, there, this will put two industrial ways off of Route 108 within a certain proximity to each other, and they fear that, like in mutual aid, people, if you go across the border into East Kingston, the first road headed north on the right is also Industrial Way. And in mutual aid, other towns might send their, their equipment to the wrong place.
So the, the names of the roads may change, and that would not trigger a need for them to come back to the planning board?
And that could get ferreted out. I mean, I, I personally don't care if they change it to whatever name, so...
Yeah, we're not married to the names either.
Okay. I, I just want to, that was a concern that was brought to my attention.
So we'll work with the E911, 911 group to determine what our names could be. I don't know if the, the town, do we have to go to the board of selectmen for road names?
I don't believe in Newton you have that requirement.
Not for private...
Not for road naming, as long as it's compliant with the E911 requirements.
This came up when the selectmen were approving another private road, and the lady was like, "Oh, you're Newton. Well, while I have you..."
Right, because the town, the road actually came in from East Kingston, but the housing was in Newton, correct?
It's the reverse. The road, the road is in Newton, the housing is in East Kingston. And she was like, you know, "I don't know what you guys are doing down there, but I understand you also have..." Because they get, E911 gets the information from the New Hampshire Highway Department or whomever is being, working on the access and cut off of South 108 for the access to the property. They report everything to E911, and that's why, while I was on the phone with her, she was like, "By the way, you got a couple of other things we'd like you to fix."
Okay, so we can probably deal with that at a later date. Jim? Okay. Barbara, do you have any comments?
I just wanted to make sure that Mr. Guyer has received the March 27 communication from the town engineer?
Yes, I believe so. Let me double check.
Okay.
I sent that out as soon as it came in.
And just for the public, and I'm not sure of how much the board has seen, so moving forward, and I'm just going to call you, Tom, have you seen this as well? Okay. In the interest of the community or the town, the planning board has asked for the town engineer to provide a quote, to conduct 20 onsite visits, as well as, um, follow-up memos for this, documenting what has processed from shovels in the ground to closeout for the fee of $4,200. And I guess that, that would be placed in escrow account, similar to a bond. It would be different, but it, same thing would be in the...
That is deposited into the NEPR account.
NEPR, yeah.
Right.
And so if, if the cost of his inspections and reviews are higher than that, the applicant has to top off that account. It saves the town from paying from that inspection that's coming from the property owner.
So that way, the, we as the planning board have a third-party independent review that the applicant covers, that we can, you know, ensure, it goes into the file, if and when this gets approved. It's outside the planning board's jurisdiction. It goes to code enforcement, but, um, it does keep us in the know. We have access to that information, and it may be useful if they come here for a change at some point in time. Do you have anything else to add?
Um, yep, so part of the bond amount for the construction of the site, one of the reasons why that is part of the inspection program is that as they complete phases of, if they get an approval of construction, they can ask for a bond reduction, and the town engineer's inspections are able to provide verification for you as the planning board that, yes, they have done X, Y, and Z. Recommend you could reduce the bond amount by 20% or, or whatever the appropriate case may be.
Right, thank you. And just for clarification for the board, um, the applicant, if it moves forward, the bond is to help, um, ensure that the project is constructed per the approved drawing. So if they build, if the stuff's halfway through and there's, the site's not seeded, we can at least go out there, there's money available to stabilize the site, and it can, you know, not be detrimental to the environment, basically. That's just one example, but, um, or there could be other things, if there's no plantings that, that would be available to install some plantings. I personally don't have a lot of questions, because I've seen this for 18 months, and Bob has been here.
Want to open it to the board, um, to the public?
Yep, so, thank you. Is there any members from the public that would like to discuss anything?
I think there were, um...
Well, there being none, I'm going to make a motion that we move to grant conditional approval, seeing that the plan falls within the scope of the applicable zoning and site plan regulations for a major site plan. The approval is for the site plan only and does not include condominium, um, conversions of the units, which would require a separate application and documentation, and that the justice would be served by approving the application. And these are the conditions, and there's a couple that Jim will add. Obtain pedo-state local permits, meet all public health and safety codes, meet with the town engineer for a pre-construction meeting. The Note 1 of the cover sheet and other place that the notes appear in the plan set shall be revised to state any future development or subdivision of any part of the land shown in Plastow, or future development or subdivision of land shown in Newton shall require compliance with RSA 674:53, land affected by municipal boundaries. Fifth one, remove all references to condominium units and limit common areas from the plans. Supply recordable milars of Pages C2, comma, C2A through E, and L1. Final milars must have necessary professional stamps. Supply a bond in the amount of $2,124,597.75. Obtain a public water supply as required by the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services. Final milars must have all necessary professional stamps. Conditions subsequent and/or ongoing shall be listed on the recorded milar. Legal protection of the town of Newton and liability waivers must be in place per site plan regulations. And Jim, you have a couple more you want to add to that, please?
You want me to read them?
Yes, please.
Regulation 8.2.4, driveway access, road design and traffic, technical design standards, roadway and access points. One, access to town roads. As part of any waiver request, the applicant must present language that releases the town from any liability for failure to access any site served by the common driveway with safety vehicles and equipment due to substantive construction, lack of maintenance, negligence on the part of any landowner served by the common driveway, and failure to main, to maintain season passability. Such language shall be placed on the recorded milar. And four, private roads, private streets serving the development shall remain in private ownership, and the developer shall provide legal instruments to ensure their continued maintenance and ownership. All, all private roads shall comply with these and other town regulations relating to construction and maintenance.
We had one more. And written approval or documentation from the gas utility.
There's still a whole nother page to go. The additional ones are the gas line, the gas line.
Is that on the bottom?
Crossing permit, landscaping performance guarantee through two growth years, and actually, on the first one, the permits' numbers will be listed on the cover sheet, which will, will be recorded. Conditions subsequent, all buildings and landscaping shall be in accordance with the recorded site plan. Any changes will need to be approved of the planning board through an amended site plan application prior to issuance of any occupancy permits for an individual building. Construction slash site work, inspection, and/or monthly visits by the town engineer. Copies of all as-built plan, including the constructed stormwater management system, shall be provided to the planning board prior to the issuance of a occupancy permit. Confirm that adequate septic facilities exist prior to the issuance of an occupancy permit. The NEPR account must be maintained to cover the cost of the town engineer's inspections and site visits. And conditions ongoing shall be, all service and maintenance, all services and manufacturing are to be performed inside buildings. No outdoor storage of any business-related material. All hazardous or regulated substances on the site shall be handled, stored, and disposed of consistent with local, state, and federal requirements. Each new business shall submit a change of use application to the planning board prior to occupying any unit. The hours of operation shall be set by the planning board on a business-by-business basis. No idling of vehicles between 7:00 PM and 7:30 AM, and no dyna-tuning with... and no dynotuning without private approval of the planning board.
Go, Jen.
One aspect, you wanted to be able to install the septic systems as you're building each building individually, not as the full approval.
Correct, that's one issue. There was a, one of the red conditions was referred to a public water systems. These will not, this is not going to be a public water system. They're private water systems, wells for each building.
So just that said, obtain a public water supply as required by DES. So if it's not required by DES, then you have met that condition.
Right.
Okay.
As far as the septic systems being installed as they are building the buildings, requiring that the septic permit be submitted to, be obtained by DES and submitted to the town prior to an occupancy permit might be the one exception to the local, state, and federal permits if the board's amenable to that. It's fairly typical of this type of development to allow for that. And basically what that means is they could build all the road infrastructure and then only ever build two of the buildings. So there's no need to build the septic system if you don't build the building.
What I would do on the obtain public water supply is take out the word "as" and replace it with "if", because if any building goes over 25 people on a regular basis, they will need a public water supply for that building. So that's something that would be noted when people came in if the building use changes. And suddenly, they're going from having six people working in a warehouse to 30 people assembling widgets. With that change is when the public water supply would have to be enacted.
That works perfectly.
Yep. And as for the septic, the condition subsequent number four is confirm that adequate septic facilities exist prior to the issuance of an occupancy permit. Needless to say, they're not going to issue an occupancy permit. If the, actually, they're probably not going to finish the building before they've installed the septic system, because that's an integral part of the way this applicant builds his buildings is the plumbing goes under the slab. Therefore, it would have to exist to a certain extent.
Why don't we, this is my suggestion change, so it's clear for everybody. Confirm that adequate septic facilities exist prior to the issuance of an occupancy permit for each building so that they can do one building at a time.
Right.
If they do all four at once, that's fine too. But it gives that flexibility while still sharing adequate septic.
It works.
So noted.
So we're waiting on a second. Second.
By Mr. Zott.
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Eddie?
Aye.
Mr. Zott?
Aye.
Ms. Eddie?
Aye.
Mr. Mashon?
Aye.
Ms. Burke?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
And Jim, you'll make sure that the applicant gets a copy from our side with all those?
That's all part of the notice of decision.
Okay, yep.
Thank you all very much. And now it's been a long road and I'm glad we finally got there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Fifth on the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, may I speak to?
Yeah, sorry.
On behalf of 125 Development, Tom Legg, Board Builder for the Development, I want to say thank you very much to the board. Highly appreciate it and welcome to the new members. Thank you.
Do you want to stay up there? You're next. So fifth on the agenda tonight is a continuation of 125 Development Corp., New Hampshire Corp. of Plastow, New Hampshire's request for a public hearing for an amended site plan at 3, 5, 7, and 9 Puzzle Lane, New Hampshire. The property is referenced as tax map 14, Block 1, Lot 27-4. The applicant has requested a continuance of this item.
So just a little bit of history for some of the new members. This is an existing site that has been constructed. It's been, it got approved seven or eight years ago. They have come in for an amended site plan. Basically, they have come in for an amended site plan because the site was not built quite to what the original approval was. So they have come in for an amended site plan in order to gain approval for what is out there. The planning board has not accepted jurisdiction of the application. It was submitted back in August or September. There are a number of inconsistencies that the applicant has been working towards correcting, but one of the biggest aspects of it is there were some stormwater detention basins that were not constructed. They are working through with their engineer to identify how they can best accommodate the stormwater on the site as it exists today so that then the amended site plan that you would receive reflects their proposal to bring the site into compliance. It's a little bit of an odd application in that it's trying to correct some things while also bringing a built site into compliance. That is where it is. At this point, we do not have the stormwater drainage updated information, which is why I would not recommend you accept any jurisdiction. But they've also requested a continuance. It has been ongoing for a while, but is there right to request the continuance? You as a board have the ability to not grant that continuance. I would recommend continuing it tonight because I do think that they are well aware that they need to be making some progress, but I will let them speak to anything further.
Good evening again. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Barry Guyer with Jones Beach Engineers for the applicant. Yeah, we are requesting a continuance. This is my fault. I am working on the drainage. I'm not quite there yet. We will be there for the next meeting, though. So we are asking for continuance. You did receive our letter.
Continuance to the April 11th meeting?
Correct.
Thank you.
The board has asked me to remind them that the last notices that went out on this project were in December. That will be four months. So if the board wishes.
How much money is in the NEPR account, do you know?
Precious little.
Little? Can you, this won't be notified?
It will not be certified.
Thank you.
Yeah, we don't have an issue with re-notification. And just let us know what you need.
Okay.
Perfect, Jen?
Just, this is a reminder that you guys have deadlines for when information should be in. The drainage that no Barry is working on, your town engineer needs more than just a couple of days to review. So if the continuance request is for the 11th, getting that in as soon as possible so we can all keep going would be great.
Perfect.
By the way, I'll need, not a set, but I just need one copy of the, of butter labels. Not three.
We can do that, you just want one.
Yep.
Motion to approve continuance?
Second.
Bob and Raina, Ms. Burke?
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Ms., Mr. Eddie?
Aye.
Mr. Zott?
Nay.
Ms. Eddie?
Aye.
Mr. Mashon?
Aye.
Mr. Burke? Sorry, Ms. Burke?
Aye.
That is a six-to-one decision.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, gentlemen. Does the board wish to actually make a motion to have me send out these non-certifieds?
Do we need to make a motion?
I don't, I don't want, the applicant, I don't want them suddenly coming back going, why was this money spent we didn't?
You can just state that there's consensus on the board to do it.
Yeah.
So it's noted in the minutes.
That would, I think, work. Okay, a couple more, hopefully quick things for board business.
Yep, you're good. Thanks, Tom.
Acceptance of the meeting minutes from February 28th, 2023. So we need a motion to do, accept the meeting minutes noting that Bob and Barbara were the only two people here.
Remind people that unless they believe there is something fundamentally incorrect, you may vote. You should only abstain if there's a conflict with your voting either in favor or against.
Motion to accept?
Second.
Thank you, Barbara.
Aye.
Mr. Moran? Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Eddie?
Aye.
Mr. Mashon?
Aye.
Ms. Burke?
Aye.
Ms. Eddie?
Aye.
And Mr. Zott?
Aye.
Thank you.
That's unanimous.
Next is approval of the NEPR manifest for $624.50. A little bit more than half went to the Rockingham Planning Commission for review of the application we just approved.
I just, I sent out a fairly detailed email explaining.
Okay.
Until, I've covered every, all of the different possibilities of why things show up on there. Did everybody understand what I wrote? I tried to give you a, in the email, I tried to go, I, you know, the first line and what it explained. Mr. Zott has been around for a while. He knows, I'm referring to the new people, Mr. Zott.
Motion to approve?
Second, this is Barbara.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Eddie?
Aye.
Mr. Mashon?
Aye.
Ms. Burke?
Aye.
Ms. Eddie?
Aye.
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
And Mr. Zott?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
And last is an update on the grant that the planning board has received.
Yep, so, I can give a quick overview of what this is.
Sure.
So back in January, the planning board applied to Invest New Hampshire, which is a funding source that the state has put out using some COVID money to help increase housing opportunity around the state. Municipalities could apply for it to do some zoning and education outreach, regulation development related to identifying housing opportunities and barriers within their communities and seeing if there might be opportunities to enable increased housing opportunity. It does get tagged as affordable housing a lot, but it is housing in general. That does include affordable housing under that umbrella. So Newton applied for and received about $40,000 worth of grant funds to do two main activities. One is to update your housing master plan chapter, which would be the first activity. And the second activity is to do, to have my office do an audit of your zoning regulations and site plan subdivision regulations to see where there might be opportunities to amend them or alter them or adopt new ones or possibly get rid of old ones that may be barriers to housing, but also to identify those that you may want to keep because they have other benefits for the town. And a good example is wetland protections. Those are barriers to development because you are restricting someone's ability to build near a wetland, but they are also protecting your water resources. So it's exploring it from a number of different topics, but it is focused on housing. Both the master planning process and the audit do include some public education and outreach as components of those. So we're going to be getting into that really in the next couple of months for the master plan chapter first. The audit will be sort of going on in the background. All of the contracts that were required for the town to get the money from the state and then for the town to contract with my office as the planning commission have all been signed. So all of the paperwork is all set. The one thing this evening I did want to bring forward, and no one has to decide anything, is a component of the grant is to have between one and three people from Newton, and it can be staff, it can be board members, it can be residents that are interested, attend what is called the Housing Academy offered by Cooperative Extension out of UNH. And what that is, is a series of workshops. Most of them are virtual, two of them are in person, to help educate people about the topic of housing, how to talk about housing, to know some of the terms and the way things are approved. I have the flyers with me. There are, you guys are in the spring cohort for the Housing Academy and it's other municipalities that have also received these grants. So if you are interested, we do need to, and probably at the next meeting or the subsequent one, identify who would be wanting to represent Newton. I'll be attending them just because of my role of doing this for a lot of other communities as well as Newton. This is the information, I'm going to ask Jim to pass it out. We have to sign people up by early May. So there is a little bit of time to think about it and consider it. They are really useful. They're not a huge time commitment. If you can't do all of them, that is okay. We're just trying to make sure that there's probably at least one person from Newton at all of them if possible, but they are posted online. We can share them if there are more than three people that are interested.
Where I currently attend UNH and I will be on campus, I would be more than happy to represent Newton.
That would be great. The in-person ones, however, are not taking place at UNH. They're actually not.
That's okay.
But the other ones are virtual. So either way, that's awesome.
I also have other business.
You're skipping ahead, Bob.
Yeah, so basically, people can at least think about it and then at the next meeting, maybe we can identify who from Newton. And it doesn't just have to be planning board members. If there is someone else in town who may be a really good candidate, it would be nice to put that out, but I would like to focus really on the planning board.
So we'll think about it. Is there any, Jim, did you have something on this?
Actually, I have a couple of things just because it's the first of, in relation to the Investment Hampshire grant. The selectmen at their next meeting will be authorizing the treasurer to make a revolving fund. They keep changing, Investment Hampshire keeps changing the way they're going to send out the money. So the way it stands at the moment is, I will create a manifest based on a bill from RPC and any administrative time. That will be signed here. That goes to New Hampshire. They will cut a check to the town of Newton. The town of Newton will cash the check and distribute, I will distribute the funds.
Okay, big circle.
One minor question. Is it anticipated that the $40,000 will cover all the things you mentioned?
Yeah, so the $40,000 covers all of my costs. It does include $500 for the town to be able to use as administrative fees. So it covers some of Jim's time. I can't promise it covers all of Jim's time, but the intent is that it shouldn't be a big administrative.
It's not a heavy paper, it's, you know, it's not a heavy paperwork.
Yeah, once Jim hits the $500 threshold, he stops.
I'll work fast, I promise.
There are two other items. One in your board packets and at your place this evening, you received information, actually, when you include this, of four different sets of workshops for information. As your AA, I try to push for as, people to take as many courses as possible when they come up, especially the new people. There are two, sorry, there are three with the Housing Academy. There are three of them that are free. And unless anybody raises their hand and says, no, don't sign me up for anything, I'd like to sign up at least the new people and hopefully some of the more senior members to attend at least the free ones. There is one there that you received, and that is the Right to Know Hybrid Workshop, which comes from the NHMA, which is the New Hampshire Municipal Association. That's $55 to take virtually. If you would like, I have traditionally always taken that during COVID. That was my responsibility. And then what I do is, when I get all the information, I existing things that need to be improved on, and things that, like public transportation, we do not have in town that would benefit people from the town. So that is next Tuesday night at the selectman's meeting. It's Scott Vogel.
Yep, I will say, it's a really nice assessment. We've had a number of communities. I think this is our second year of doing this. You know, it's a planning tool, but it can help to integrate a lot of different aspects of municipal life and responsibility. So it does have implications for planning board functions as well, but also Rec Department, Conservation Commission, some of the different services in town, whether they be social or not. So if you have interest, it is a really nice program, and it's not a huge time commitment.
Yeah, Newton, New Hampshire has a pretty low walkability and bikeability score, so...
That is true. And in all honesty, one of your next master plan chapters that would be really great to update is your transportation master plan chapter. You have a few others, but that is one I have on my targets to try to work with you guys on.
Oh, thank you for that segue, because we have an issue. Because the people that have been working on a master plan are no longer on the board, two of the three. Mr. Piper is the only one left. Hence, Mr. Chairman, we need to get -- find out, one, if Mr. Piper is going to continue on himself, and then we need, if he is, to get him some help to keep going with this master plan, because as we've been doing, it's very important for this town to continue to update that master plan and get it set in place so that this doesn't all end up going for naught.
I just want to remind people, there is going to be continuing work on the master plan because through the Invest New Hampshire grant, there will be a new chapter, hopefully written, on housing in Newton. Through the age-friendly communities, there will be information on transportation and possibly other things that need to go into the master plan. I will speak to Mr. Piper to see whether or not -- because we have a default budget this year, there is no additional funds that we've used in the past to fund a separate master plan chapter in this year's budget, because, trust me, it's basically -- this is not an awful -- our budget is not -- hasn't had no fat in it in the past 10 years. It's now starting to eat its own protein. You can tell who here actually understands that one. I'm not saying that it -- I'm not trying to dissuade you. I'm just suggesting that it might be a year when, because of the way things are structured, that you may want to do the master plan as a committee of the whole versus sending it out to a subcommittee that will then report back. You know, that's something that might be better to have solid input.
I will say that the housing master plan chapter, I'm going to need input from all of you, because housing is a very controversial topic sometimes because we are talking about people's homes. So it is good to get everybody's perspective, so that might dovetail well with your budgetary issues for the next year. So not to discourage the master plan committee from doing anything else. They do other stuff that's really useful, but from just sort of a time management and function.
Well, that's my goal, was to have the subcommittee to where they would at least be able to keep continuity with the master plan, even if we didn't have the money to be able to go out and do it. But they would be able to maintain that focus and be able to have at the ready, to be able to implement when we can other things instead of trying to -- and I don't want to say bog down the board, but with a board where we have -- we could have a busy night like tonight, quite a few nights to be -- and then have to sit here for quite some time going over the master plan could prove to be a little bit lengthy, especially...
So the way that many boards handle that, the first meeting of the month is cases. The second meeting of the month is your workshop, where it might be zoning ordinances, it might be master plan work. That is something you certainly could explore. The only thing is you would need to adopt a new application schedule, which would be -- is only hearing applications on one meeting or having the flexibility to only hear them on one meeting works for a lot of towns.
Eat it.
Applicants often don't like it because it can take them longer. So you could leave it as a flexibility, but if you dedicate certain workshops, that can be another way to deal with it.
I can try to put together the board's options.
Yeah, why don't we just kind of table this and put it on the agenda item for next, the 11th? There's not much happening right now on the 11th, correct?
At your next meeting, you have, I believe, three public hearings.
50% less.
Sorry, I take that back. You have -- yeah, you do have three public hearings at the next meeting. However, one of the things that I can do is always say on the second meeting of the month, it will be an automatic -- it's a line item on the agenda for master plan update.
Sure.
And that can be -- come either from Ms. Rowden, it can come from Mr. Piper.
Doesn't have to be the whole meeting, either.
Well, no, it's just it's an item under...
The time we have...
Under board business.
We'll use, yeah. So just putting it on the agenda to remind us to do something, I think is a really good idea.
Right. And that's sort of my way of sort of, you know, the proverbial -- I'm not kicking it down the road. I'm giving you people a little kick in the butt.
That's useful.
So if you'd like that, but I'll put it all together, and you can discuss it more in depth.
Yep, I just don't want us to -- we've come a long way with the new master plan, and I don't want to be -- I don't want to...
That makes perfect sense.
... fall by the wayside.
Anything else?
Motion with adjourned.
Wait, hang on one sec. This is Barbara.
Five down.
I have something to say.
Too late.
I want to congratulate the new members who have been voted in. I would like to thank all the volunteers who volunteered to be alternates, and I want to thank Mr. Marshon for continuing to be the ex officio to the planning board.
It's my pleasure and an honor to be with you.
Thank you, Barbara. I would second everything you said. It's actually nice to have this many people in the room. So that being said, at 5 of 9, I'd like to end...
8:54.